Meeting to order, Monday, March 19, 6:30 here at Washington Primary School. Stephanie's not here. I'll call her. So Anthony is not here. John Bonayudo?
Here.
Alan Brown? Greg Cava? Michelle Bora here. Jim Herschel?
Here.
Stephanie Kolnick? Jennifer Pody?
Here.
Lisa Roush? Michael Sinatra?
Here.
Julie Stewart here. Peter Tagley?
Here.
Okay. So welcome, everyone. We're really excited to have you here to visit our school and to be able to share some of our missions that we've been working on. What I plan to do tonight with the staff is to take you on a tour of the building. Obviously, we won't see everything, but we'll stop at some highlights and then end our tour in our Makerspace room, which is actually going to be our highlight for our school that we'd like to share in greater detail with you, and then return here for a quick video that really goes a little bit deeper into the kind of work that we're doing in the Makerspace. So before we head on our tour, I really want to take this time, because I know it's going to get a little hectic as we move along in the evening, to introduce the students who are here. While you're in the Makerspace, you will be able to have opportunities to have some tinkering activities and explore with them, and they're your coaches for tonight. So I would just like them to introduce themselves. We'll start over here.
I'm James Darwin Euvers, and I am in 4th grade.
My name's Taden Civic, and I'm in 4th grade.
My name's Jonathan Proffler, I'm 3rd grade.
I'm Grayling Grandwater, and I'm 4th grade.
I'm Caleb Simmons, and I'm in 5th grade.
I'm Alonzo Kaden, I'm in 5th grade.
Great. And then we have lots of staff here, so I thank them so much for joining us. So maybe if you could just quickly say who you are, we'll start over here.
I'm Marion Zoller. I'm the STEM and tag teacher for Region 12.
And back there?
Anne Westcott, one of the Reach teachers.
Darah Ray, I teach 1st grade.
Brooke Fason, library and tech.
Speaker, sorry. No speeches.
Peter Hosking, 3rd grade.
Becky Botari, math interventionist.
Sarah Fiola, 2nd grade teacher.
Jen Rotanda, 3rd grade teacher.
Lori McGovern, kindergarten.
Kelly White, 4th grade teacher.
Mary Rose Guenka, Spanish teacher.
Susan Yubaldi, reading interventionist.
Thank you for joining us, and we're excited to have you here as well. So for our tour, if you could please take off your name tag, because your name actually signifies... Don't keep putting on... Put your name tag on. It signifies which group you're going to be in the Makerspace, so that will help you. Yeah, so if you can put that name tag down, it will help us, and the kids are going to head out. And Stephanie is here?
And Lisa.
And Lisa, awesome. So let's get their name tags on, and then we'll start our tour. And while they're doing that, I'm going to just point out this part of our library, which is really exciting. This is the second year that we're doing the living garden in our school. The first year, we grew lots of different things, like lettuce, for example, different types, and we had some failures last year, so we're kind of learning from our failures. And this year, we are growing some snack peas, and they look really healthy, and the boys and girls take care of them every day, and our hopes is that we'll have them for snacks. So let's head out, and I'll make a stop right at our computer lab, and it's quite amazing. We have these wonderful Macs. The students visit the computer lab once a week. It's in combination with our Makerspace, so we actually see this as an extension of our Makerspace. We do lots of different things in here that cannot be done, say, on the Chromebooks. So, for example, doing presentations with iMovie, using our green screen, which is now upstairs, but generally is housed here. That kind of equipment needs the Macs to be able to do the... to interface well. And things that can be done in the classroom, like research and things like that, that's typically done in the classroom on the Chromebooks. So we're really grateful for this really beautiful lab, that the kids come down and they make great use of it. And Mrs. Fason is both our librarian and technology person, so she's very innovative and has really stretched our minds in terms of the different kinds of tasks that students can do, so we're really happy for her kind of innovative spirit, and the kids are doing great things. Questions about this room? All right, we're going to follow me.
Okay, so I kind of wanted to stop at the center and just describe that this hallway here, we have kindergarten, one pre-K classroom, 1st grade in our art room. We'll definitely visit our 1st grade and art room, and you're welcome to walk into any classrooms on our way, but I really wanted to highlight this bulletin board, because this is an initiative that we are really growing in our school, and it's around gratitude. And each, like, say, 6 weeks, we have a shared text that the students read in all the classrooms, pre-K through 5, and it's around the concept of gratitude. And we've been really shaping this through gratitude spots, so you might see some spots around the school where you stand on it and be grateful. So the goal is for students to grow a grateful mindset and think about the things, the people, the activities, that really are meaningful to them, and to recognize that they're simple and to grow from that. And we've taught the students that if you are grateful, you are happier, you are more likable, and you're actually healthier, and that's statistically shown in some research. So we're really growing that within them, okay? And so we're going to move along. You can walk in wherever you want to. I'm going to definitely show you pre-K classrooms down at the lower level, so we'll...
We're going to walk in the 1st grade classroom. This is Mrs. Ray's classroom. So in most of the classrooms, you'll typically see a setup where there's always a meeting area, and students do lots of their discussion points. They do some lessons there, morning meeting, closing circle, and they also have a workspace. So that's pretty much the design of most of the classrooms. In some of the classrooms, you'll see different alternative seating. You'll see some stools, some cushions, and so they get to choose what is their preference throughout the day and makes them comfortable for learning.
So you have a set plan, like, everything is to be configured in the classroom?
No, the teachers design it themselves, but ultimately, you'll see that everyone structures their room so they have a meeting space. That's a really important part of all of our elementary classrooms across the district. You'll see that.
So each classroom, really, the teacher interprets how the class is...
Yes, mm-hmm. Yep. And they work very hard under the tenants of responsive classroom, which helps them, you know, talk about flow and routine, and also they create opportunities for students to be independent. So everything is labeled, so that students, if they need something, they know around their room where to get it. They don't have to ask, you know, basically, you know, where is everything? They're very comfortable with their setting, so it's... You'll see lots of labels.
I want to just ask you a question about the computers, too.
Yes.
This is 1st grade, you said.
Yes.
Do they have four, because it's 1st grade? They don't have the Chromebooks yet, or they do have the Chromebooks plus these?
They do have Chromebooks in 1st grade, so they use that basically as part of their center time.
Right.
So welcome to the art room. This is a really beautiful space. Mrs. Manley is the art teacher, and this year, she's really utilizing a choice-based instruction along that supports the visual arts standards. And I wanted to really spend just a couple of minutes in this room just pointing things out, because I think it's really been exciting for the students. So what she does is she kind of thinks about this place as a studio, and she has centers. And so she introduces centers one at a time through demonstration. So, for example, she has a drawing area, and this is a center that has all the materials that you would need for drawing. It also gives anchor charts about the kinds of concepts that you might learn through drawing. And then she also has collage, and she has sculpture, et cetera. She opens these sort of studio centers one at a time, and then students explore, so that when they come in here, they actually have choice. They say to themselves, "What would I like to do today?" They get out a planning sheet, they make their plan about what they want to do, and then they get their supplies. So in an art period, you'll see students do multiple different things throughout our time, that hour time, and she then is able to confer with each student about what they want to achieve in the art class. So this year is her first year trying it, and we are seeing really great art coming along. And we also have anchor charts you'll see about, like, how to use the pastels, and so they learn how to blend. But then you also see this chart right here, which is really cool. It's called craftsmanship, and she's really working very hard to help students learn about what that means, and that's really about quality in art. And as you can see, if you're a 1, you can see what that might look like. If you're a 2, you can see what that looks like, and so forth. And so kids can see that as they're growing in their art skills, that they're aiming for what something looks like a 4. So it's not an art piece, it's the quality of the work. And I really want to show you one student's art piece out on the wall, because he was so excited to share it with me, but it really exemplifies the growth over time. So we're going to take a look at the beginning of the year with this student, and it's pretty flat. Can you see that? And yet, the same instruction probably happened at the beginning of the year. This was just recently done, and so now this student grew from not only a flat, but now to a three-dimensional, and also recognized that the background needed to be much lighter for pop art. So lots of skill happened here, lots of growth, not only for three-dimensional, but line and shape and how that goes together with shading and background. Really interesting. So this is the kind of thing that's happening in the art room, so it's a really, like, a growing thing that's occurring, but I see really positive pieces that are resulting from it, and really self-designed and really about interest. So, really awesome. Questions about that? Okay, we're going to go right here through the hallway. We can just scoot in here. And I just want to highlight our Be Kind Initiative. I know that Pat talked about Ben's Bells. We've been doing this, I think this might be our 3rd or 4th year that we've been doing Ben's Bells, and it's really a kindness initiative, creating kind mind, creating kindness towards yourself, and then creating kindness towards others. And so students are encouraged to show kindness and be upstanders, and they receive sort of recognition. And as a school, we celebrate this, and when we get 200 kindness flowers, we have a school celebration. We're over 400 right now, so we're working really hard. And then this year, we combine gratitude with kindness, so we're doing a 14-day challenge right now. So you wake up in the morning, you say two grateful things, you turn it over, and then in the day, you have to do one kind act, and then you can turn it back over. So they all have these bracelets, and after 14 days, they can then challenge one of their family members to also engage in the 14. I have extra bracelets for them. So really working hard on climate and making sure students really learn those kinds of skills to be effective collaborative, you know, workers in the future. Okay, questions?
Yeah.
All right, let's go down to the pre-K. So we have a fabulous lunchroom. So our lunchroom is... We love our lunchroom. These tables, by the way, are new from this year, so we are so appreciative from your support to be able to have these tables. It allows for students to have greater dialogue, because it makes it sort of a closed circle for communication, and it's helped them really grow those skills. You can see some of our other initiatives in terms of non-kindness gratitude, but we are spending lots of time with growth mindset. And over here, this is a board that helps our students set goals in classrooms, so collaboratively, students decide on a goal that they'd like to achieve that week or over the next couple of weeks, and they work as a class to achieve that goal, and we recognize them at our community meetings. And so you can see they've gotten lots of certificates. If you have a chance, take a look at some of the things that they're working on. They can go from simply walking quietly into the hallways to, you know, using accountable talk phrases in classrooms, so they grow from, you know, level of difficulty over the year. And then 1st grade is... shows their wonderful leprechaun tracks. And they came out fabulous this year, and they're really quite detailed, so if you have a chance, just take a look at them. They didn't catch any leprechauns, though. They were hoping to, that's for sure. And then we'll head down to the Reach area. Just let you kind of browse through both rooms. They're connected, so we have approximately about 40 students in our Reach program. We have two rooms here and one on the first level of the rail. So you're welcome just to go in and kind of see the kinds of things that they're doing and ask me any questions and...
And this is just a Reach playground?
Playground. Yep, that's the Reach playground. And kindergarten also uses that at the recess times.
That's great.
And that shed is full of Reach equipment. That's all I want to say. They've got scooters, they've got bikes, they've got everything you can imagine in that shed. That gets great use. How many kids? About 40 kids. Is there more, or is it just this room? This room, and then there's another room right here. We can cut right through. There's puppies for them in the locker. This is always good. And the sink, so we got your kneecaps. I remember when I used to...
But they still have to step up.
I know.
They still have to step up.
They're so little.
It's really fun being here. It's a nice big space.
Oh, short table.
I know.
Very short table.
It is cool. Yes.
It kind of varies from year to year. We get new entries as they turn or age. Yeah, so it changes, you know, throughout the years.
It's getting close.
Is that concert? Does that vary?
It can vary. Yeah, but most of the time, it's special, entering at their...
Right, but I know my daughter did Reach, and I know there was always a certain percentage that they would always try to have regular...
I think right now, we're primarily mostly regular students.
Okay.
And with handfuls, yeah, we're not out of whack that we would have to really measure that percentage at the moment.
Right, okay.
It could happen in the future. Any questions?
Yes.
All right, let's head upstairs. This is our Unlock Your Creativity board, and the kids usually have lots of fun. We kind of cleared it off a little bit, but, yeah, so they'll come up here during free time and they'll do whatever. Sometimes they draw, sometimes they write words, but it's been fun. It was an inspiring idea, and we kind of got it together, and, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, and then we're going to go down through this hallway. You're so smart, Pete. I know, we're going to go on this room.
This is a fun room. This is... This room has a rainbow rug, but it's not... It's in a circle. Donut pillow, that's silly.
So, because part of the tour is also just, like, facilities stuff, so just I'm noticing the temperature change between Reach and up here. It's always a challenge in the school. I think heating has always been a challenge, but it's...
Always warm here.
This is always... This room is a warm room, it's always... So this is Mrs. White's 4th grade classroom, and so she can kind of take a look. You can notice the same sort of structure. One of the things I didn't mention for you is our math program. You'll all notice in the classrooms, there's always calendar math, and this is number corner. It's a great opportunity for students to mentally, you know, process math and look at patterns and make connections from one concept to another. So this is something that all the classrooms do regularly. And lots of, you know, you can see different things happening in 4th grade. You can look at some of the anchor charts and see some of the things that they've been studying, and hopefully you'll have a chance to look at some of the bulletin board and the work that the students are doing in 4th grade.
There's 22 students in this class?
Yes, this is our largest class. Questions? We're going to... Say that, I'm sorry?
We're taking in everything.
Okay, and then I'm going to take you through this little room, because I just wanted to highlight our trout in-classroom program, and Mr. Hosking, who's right behind there, maybe he can lead the way?
Sure.
And kind of tell us a little about that. Mrs. Pody already got there?
Well, these are our babies. We could spend the next 25 minutes me naming each of their 80 names right now, but I won't... I'll spare you that, but, no, we raise trout from eggs. It's a free program that the state does with Trout Unlimited. There's an expert in town who comes in and kind of teaches the kids about the watershed and how, you know, we can help maintain that. They're learning all sorts of things, from, you know, basic math skills, measurement, some chemistry. They have to measure the pH and the temperature of the water and see how it affects, and it's just, I mean, responsibility every day. With all these snow days, it's been a little bit like, "Oh, so what are we going to do on these days?" We're not here to feed the fish, but they just... They love the experience, and the cool thing is that, you know, we have some young fishermen who get to see, "Oh, yeah, this is how, you know, what I catch develops," and later on in the year, we will release them into the shiapog and maybe get to see them another day and wave to them as we're swimming by or whatever. So, you know, another great, just real-world application, where they get to see all of these science skills and math skills come to life every day.
How long are you going to keep them?
We keep... So the temperature of the fish tank is 51 degrees, so it depends a little bit as to when the river is compatible. Last year, we released them kind of mid-May.
How big did they get?
When we released them, they're only like 2 inches long, and they're happy to be out in the wild. And the beavers are happy, and the otters and...
Is this a room used just for 4th and 5th grade, or...
So this room is used as kind of a small group instruction room. It's used as pull-out for 3rd grade, 4th grade. 5th grade uses it from time to time, 2nd grade uses it from time to time. We do have a motor program, which is a way for students to kind of manage their own stress, so that takes place in this room as well. So it's kind of a multipurpose. Everybody's in and out, and, you know, it's not designated as a specific space, but it is a place where somebody's in there all the time doing something meaningful and constructive, and watching the fish.
This hallway, we have 2nd grade through 5th grade. So this is 3rd grade here, 2nd is behind Jim, and then all the way is our 5th grade classroom. Our specialty classroom is to the left here. I'm going to take you in our Makerspace room. I'm going to have you have some fun for a little bit, and then as we go down to library, you can walk in in all of these classrooms. Sound good? All right, so in the Makerspace, your tag, your first color, so like, Michelle, you're green, you're going to be going to the green station first, okay?
Okay.
And so just pay attention to your color. And green happens to actually be the green screen, so, okay. I'll have you walk in the space first, though. I have to get my stuff here for this showcase. Just stay for a moment. I just want to point this out. So if you have a chance, you know, take a look at this. These are kinds of... The kind of things that we wanted to put in our Maker Space. We wanted to make sure that we had some sort of things with textiles, electronics, obviously, performance... Performing arts, the visual arts. We wanted to integrate a lot of different things and not make this space just strictly what is typically considered Makerspace, which would be the electronics. So we wanted to really deepen this, especially for elementary, because we really believe that growing their interests is our priority at this point in time, because the more things that they're engaged in, the more they'll be able to shape what it is they're truly passionate about in the future. So this is really a space for them to do that, okay? So let's head in and take a look at the room itself, and then we'll sort you, okay? Welcome, welcome. So if you're purple... Yeah.
There's an old student over there.
Yes, I'm sending you. Look how well behaved I am. So this is the Makerspace. We were so fortunate at our school to have a room that was available to us. Not all the buildings do have that. All the buildings do have a Makerspace. And Makerspaces don't all have to look the same. The priority is that we develop makers and problem solvers, and so this room was a space where we were able to, you know, put together... We had a little bit of a remodel in the summer, because we had carpet, and we knew that carpet was not durable for a Makerspace, so we were able to put down some really fun, you know, flooring. And then this room was an old science room, so it kind of really looks like it could be a Makerspace, so we had lots of drawers and storage, and so we created really a space that had a lot of different categories, like textiles and visual arts and musical arts in the corner, and electronics and magnetism and so forth. So tonight, you are going to have some fun. So if you are in... This is purple.
Purple.
You're purple, you're going to start here, okay? If you are red, you're going to start there.
Red here?
Yes. And if you are... What color is that?
Blue.
Blue, you're going to go in that corner, and if you're green, you're out in the hallway. And if you're here, it's the one we want.
Caleb is going to teach. Caleb is going to teach.
So, so, also watch, read the... It's coloring with colors. They read the colors, and then they do what the action says.
Oh, boy.
Such as go faster, slow down, spin.
So we've got the coding cards here. You can tell it to be a snail pace, slow, turbo. So here you have the codes for speed. What's important is that you make a thick, flat line. It reads it, and then... Don't let those colors overlap. If you have the circles, it seems to work better, but it will read.
That's so fun.
Oh, my gosh!
You're going to help me, right? Yeah. Thank you.
So that was spin. Turn around.
This is so awesome.
So it's coding, and you can read the codes here. Take a box of markers, the flat line. Do you want to use the thick?
So then do I draw like a line and then do that, and then another line? Correct. Thank you, Mrs. Zoller.
It's the start and end of the block line. And also, also, I forgot.
She's so sad today. Pick one.
He's got it.
Got it.
So why is that one working?
It's usually less clay than, yeah.
Okay, so it's not heavy?
I tried to make the walls thinner.
Okay.
Too thick, I think we'll probably make it sink. Let's see if I...
I didn't do any. It was really hard.
Oh, someone's got a glove. Oh, someone's got a thing.
Two, two did it. I bet I can make it lighter, though. I bet I can make it hold more.
Yep, I bet you can. So what strategy are you going to use to make it hold more?
Pitch it even more, make the walls even thinner. And higher.
And higher. Is that a good trick? The higher the walls, because as you displace the water, you don't want it to go up and over.
And they have to be even, too. If they're uneven in one spot, that's a good trick.
Almost.
I think that one had a hole.
Almost got it. I don't know. It's almost going again.
It's got a lot of bilge water in there.
You've got to leave.
It took a while to sink.
So I learned about this at a workshop. I had never seen them before.
Right.
And so I said, "We have to have her."
Yeah, absolutely.
The kids have just, like, well, they have a greater facility than I think most people, you know, but the structure is a thing.
If they're building something, and they're creative, you're doing everything, yeah.
Oh, it worked!
And then they figure out why it works, how it works.
I'm like you.
Yeah, where'd you see?
Grab.
Did you see it in the show?
Is that a Makerspace workshop? They just had these, you know, different houses, and you've just been inspired by it.
I made a bulldozer. Dude, it's going to fail. It's going to tip. It's tipping.
Three, two, one.
Well, hi, Dad and neighbor. I would really like to build a treehouse, but it's right in between our two houses, and my friends and I would all be able to use it, so I think it would be a great idea, a great way we could build just one house and not have to build two, and we could all play in it.
What do you think, John?
I think that's perfect.[1740.22]
You know what, uh, you want to include in the details as far as are you going to get up to the treehouse or want some cots or?
Well, we probably need a ladder to get up there. And I think we'd like to have some chairs and things in there.
Well, we don't want to build it too high off the ground now.
True. So we'll make sure we don't build it too high. Um, but we might need a roof in case it rains.
All right.
I appreciate you taking time just to play a little bit. This is what the kids really do and it helps them just release their creative energy so they can be ready to do some, uh, project-based learning, which we'll talk about through the video. But before you go, I just want to point out to, um, what's happening in our 3D printer. Uh, Caleb, where are you, Caleb? Uh, stand up for a minute. So Caleb, can you just tell them what you, problem you were trying to solve?
Online Nintendo Switch, the, the, it's a device and when you're using it, the, the kickstand that it has, when you have it on the table, the charger port is on the bottom. So you can't, you can't charge it while you're, while you have it on the table. So I made this design to, so you can put the main console right here and then the charger cord would go through this little hole in the middle. And then get to the.
And here it is right there going. It's, it's been going all day, but it's. So that's really the start of what we're trying to do. So, thank you, Caleb. So underway, just take a look at that. And so we're going to head down this hallway. You can go into any classroom you like as we're going down. And then we're going to go back to the library because I know you have some business and just before I can finish up.
There.
Thank you, boys and girls. Cannot tell you. Because I have to first preface that we have a fabulous fifth grade, uh, class in that they're so engaged in learning, um, that this to them is like cooperative work. Like they're always focused.
Wow. It's just really, it's different.
It is. But any other way, because this is a very narrow kind of room that it's, it's a lot of kids. It doesn't seem that way, but we like our meeting space.
It must be a really focused class, as you said, because this wouldn't work if you had a really rambunctious group.
Yeah, they are so focused. This works perfect.
Twenty, twenty kids?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, the acre charts that you'll see in here are, are much more advanced. You'll see way more advanced math going on and reading. Um, yeah, they're, they're a hardworking group and they, they want to achieve.
Now, Emily, what did you do when, you know, at some point Washington Primary was larger?
It was.
And you had multiple sections of each individual grade. So what did you do?
So like maker space wouldn't exist, that would have been a classroom. Our special education room wouldn't have existed, that would have been, it was a classroom.
Right.
And that would have been in the little room, that literacy shared room with the trout. That would be their room.
That would have been a room.
Downstairs, we didn't have pre-K. So kindergarten was, two kindergartners were down with, where reach was. And then we had second grade downstairs.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So there is one upside to.
Yeah, so we've been able to really be more creative because we, and not that I want to shrink, but like as we're shrinking, we've been able to do some very innovative things that maybe we might not have been able to do.
And well, that space is there, so if you need to reclaim that space.
Oh, we would have to, absolutely. The classrooms would always take a priority, but then we would find different ways, you know, to continue. I don't know if there's still people down there, but.
Meeting back to order and I need a motion to move the action items of, up to the front of our agenda because we need to act on those before reg leaves.
Thank you.
Do I have the motion to do that? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. There were seven of us here, right? Okay, uh, you're on, go.
All right, you have in your package, uh, some, uh, phase one documents for the agri-science and science labs. Uh, these have to be submitted to the state. We're meeting with them on March twenty-first, on Thursday of this week, nine in the morning. And, uh, therefore we need, uh, we need these to be approved by the Board of Education. These are primarily for the, uh, demolition and, uh, some of the remedial work that we're doing. So, uh, this has to be approved by the Board of Education and the Building Committee. It's already been approved by the Building Committee on the twelfth and it's up for approval tonight. So I would like, if possible, to have a motion to approve, uh, the phase one documents for agri-science and the science labs for project submission to the state on March twenty-one eighteen. So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions? We have, uh, Jennifer Mangielli from Castle Booze Associates and, um, where is she? Laurel, Laurel Purcell from ONG Industries. If you have any questions.
John?
Is, does DAS have to approve or disapprove of, of these draws?
I guess they technically approve them is what they do, yeah. They approve them or disapprove them. But that, that decision goes then, Jennifer?
After they feel comfortable with the documents that we submit, there's many letters, a lot of paperwork. They have checklists that they go through and when they feel comfortable that all those forms, paperwork, everything has been satisfied, um, that local officials are satisfied with the progress and what's in the documents, they will give an, um, an, an approval or a, how do I put it? They, they let you go out to bid. They will send you a letter and say, well, this project now can be released for bid, but you cannot release it for bid until you get the letter, which is their acceptance.
Right, and the reason why we're keen to do this now is because we would like to start the demolition work this summer since the school is closed. So we want to be able to have had a bid by then so that the work can commence.
Yeah, that was a very thorough job. I can't believe that DAS investigates all that's contained in those.
They're paying for it.
All right, no more questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those against? Those abstaining? Motion passes? All right, next item?
All right, I will, uh, give you the very short version of AgSTEM. Then I got to run out the door, I have to get to the planning commission. Basically, we have completed the design development phase of the project. There's a couple of bits that have to be done for those plans to be finalized. And then we're, uh, we have received, the architect has requested consent of the Building Committee to move on to the construction documents phase, which is the third and final phase of the design. Uh, and, um, we have given that authority. We're also in the process of local permits. Uh, we have, uh, received an inland wetland regulated activity permit last week. I think that was on Wednesday. On Thursday night, we received five variances from the zoning board of appeals, the variances we needed. Uh, tonight, we're in front of the planning commission on a referral under general statute eight twenty-four, which is technically for municipal improvement. So it's not clear that they're going to take jurisdiction of it. So tonight's meeting is, is where I'm headed in a couple of minutes. Um, and so we're moving through the process of obtaining, uh, our local approvals. And, um, I'm, we have authorized, uh, the expenditure of up to fifteen thousand dollars, in order to pay the fees necessary to obtain the building permits related to this, the work we just approved tonight for demolition and, and that, that work there. So we've, uh, we haven't, it hasn't gone out the door yet, but it's going to probably tomorrow. So, uh, we, you know, that's where we are and that's what we've spent at this point in time.
Do you need, you need a motion?
Yeah, no, I don't need a motion. I just am making that, that's my, that's my report. Bob may have, you may have some questions of Bob on the finances. If you do, I'm going to leave because I need to be at seven thirty at the planning commission. So thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
All right, that was all we needed to act on?
Yeah.
Excellent. So let's go back to the top of our agenda and let Mrs. Judd finish her presentation.
Thank you, thank you for coming. So, uh, we chose to highlight the maker space. It's been a work in progress. Um, a couple of years ago, we just started to dabble in it a little bit by providing, like, choices for students on a free choice. We have a, a time on Friday that's called free choice. It's about twenty minutes. And we started to develop different activities to see whether students would really be, you know, uh, engaged with this kind of work. And we did puppetry and photography and we found that they were really, um, you know, eager to do different interests. And so from there, we started to study maker space. And, um, as you can see, we, we have grown it to what you experience today. So the video that you're going to see is really a, um, a work in progress. I have a really core group of teacher, teachers who've been really putting in a lot of effort and, uh, research into making this, uh, experience positive. Uh, Marion Zoller, who is, I was here earlier, Brooke Basin, Becky Botari, who you saw upstairs, Jane Manley, our art teacher, and, um, Mary Rose Grunka, really putting in a lot of energy and, and Ann Westcott to try to make this, uh, come to be. So what you'll see in the video is just really our journey. So it's our story and hopefully, uh, you'll enjoy it.
Welcome to the wonderful world of Maker Space. Here at Washington Primary School, we are so excited to give our students the opportunity to innovate and create.
I wondered about string art. So instead of doing the triangles, I chasmed myself and I went onto YouTube to find this design that I decided to do. I created, uh, a creative book trailer from iMovie, uh, of a book from, called Pelé, a biography about, uh, a famous soccer player. I designed, um, a maze in Coteable and it's fun because you can go and you can do decorations around it. My innovation was building a fortress out of caple blocks. I had to stick with it and post a view when the bobsled skis will fall off. We collaborated in Maker Space on a gingerbread house. The materials we used were cardboard, stickers, lots of stickers.
Hot glue.
Hot glue and tape.
Maker Space is another place for students to grow their personal interests and creative potential. Maker Space promotes fun with innovation, intuitive questioning, active exploration, and is always student-centered, providing multiple pathways to reach all learners. The adult serves as a facilitator, encouraging, guiding, sharing, and connecting learners in order to promote peer support, teamwork, problem solving, and inspiration. Posing questions is essential to the success of the Maker Space experience.
Tell me about the timeline.
I've noticed that this, uh, influences things that are connected to it by this port.
Our journey began with our greatest resource, the teachers, parents, and students. A core group of teachers gathered information on quality maker spaces, observed examples, participated in workshops, and tinkered with materials. In addition, parents and students participated in several survey questions to help carve a meaningful path. From these experiences, our vision expanded greatly and our enthusiasm bursted with our own innovative spirits. Teachers generated a series of lessons to lead a learner from being an explorer to being a purposeful maker. Throughout the fall, early tinkering activities and challenges assisted students in using various materials and tools in purposeful ways. Through a variety of orientation challenges, students learned how to select and use the safest and best tool for a job and how to respect the space and others. Students safely built, glued, hammered, cut, and took apart items to make new things. Making bridges, marble mazes, instruments, or upcycling to create new toys are just a few projects that students have engaged in. Exploring electronics through circuitry and coding is another area of exploration. In addition, our Maker Space is seamlessly connected to the work in our computer lab. Students use technology as a tool to express their learning. Students create commercials and book trailers to share with peers. All of these play and exploration activities prepare our students to the next step, which is to, uh, be self-directed and, uh, plan their project-based learning. Asking questions, exploring resources, creating a prototype or model, using others as resources, and engaging in ongoing self-evaluation is cyclical and strengthens students' ability to set in motion a plan and to practice follow-through. Each lesson in the Maker Space ends with a closing circle, a ritual of sharing ideas, challenges, and collaborative efforts. Research on grit tells us that individuals who combine passion with perseverance find greater meaning and success as they journey through life. It also tells us that we can influence and grow grit from the inside out. We can do this by encouraging students to explore and follow passions, to engage in deliberate practice, and to connect their interests to the community at large. Maker Space helps our elementary students explore their early passions, to grow new ones and to muddle through challenges with a growth mindset. It ultimately serves as a playground to practice and grow grittiness in our students.
Well, what I like about Maker Space is how you can express your creativity and there's not, and there's so many things you can do.
What I like most about Maker Space is because they have all these cool robots and materials you can basically do to make anything.
In Maker Space, I learned how to make slime and I learned how to sew.
When I experience a challenge, I usually, um, try a different way or rewind back and see like what I did wrong.
So Maker Space is just a little seed of an idea that, uh, really brings together the commitment of staff, students, and parents and creating an atmosphere where students can really explore their passions and, uh, take learning to the next level. We're very grateful to have this opportunity at Washington Primary School.
So that's our story and, uh, still going. Um, and we're going to continue to grow it the best that we can and research it. Um, our students made a little, uh, treat from you from the Maker Space and I wanted to call your attention to it. The cup is actually a paper cup and it's a textile, um, craft and it's a weaving. So, uh, so it was a combination of third, fourth, and fifth grade. The flowers are an example of circuitry and, um, the, uh, flowers are made from, uh, coffee filters that have been heated and sort of dyed with water. So we wanted to just share that with you so that you can see that they are being creative.
Can we keep them?
Yes, they're yours to keep. Just, just know that they're, they're, they're run by batteries. So, um, you know, open that circuit up so that you don't, uh, uh, use up the little. And then you can use the cup, I thought, maybe for like pencils and things like that. I thought it was, you know.
It's just my wife, though, I made it.
If you flip the battery, it'll turn off and then you can flip it back. Yeah. Okay. They're very, they're kind of, you know, temperamental, so, but anyways. Um, do you have questions for us or comments?
No, you seem to have things on the computer.
My staff has things on the computer. Keep it up their peak.
I'm just along with the ride.
It was wonderful, thank you. The, the one challenge I would give you is as we're thinking about opening up our AgSTEM program, how could Maker Space at the elementary level feed into enthusiasm that would kind of flower at the high school level?
I have to say, um, the one thing that we notice about our students is that they're very eager to go into the Maker Space. And so, um, I feel like it's going to, we're, I think what we're trying to grow here is not students who are going to, um, like, go one direction, like either electronics or coding. We're growing students who can explore their interests. And we believe, um, that through the middle school and high school years, that if they have a breadth of different experiences and exposures, that they'll begin to funnel what is really important to them. And I think that the middle school Maker Spaces and all of the AgSTEM programs that they're going to do there are going to really help them go deeper into something that they're really passionate about. But we feel at the elementary school that our role is really to help them explore and to actually practice what it looks like to have an idea, plan for the idea, follow through, persevere when something gets tricky, make changes, and then reflect. And I think that process will go on to something that's really important to them when they pursue their passion. Anything else?
Just as you were saying that, I was struck by how, uh, that's what you've described in the art room too? They sort of walk in? Because I, I think the Maker Space is wonderful and it's so amazing, but it's kind of new. It's a new way of learning, a new way trying to incorporate into the traditional schedule and, and everything. And so the more across the disciplines the students have experience with walking into the, what looks just like a candy shop of toys to play with, right? And be like, oh, wait, no, I need to, to make something. So working on the plan and really teaching them, uh, the process, regardless of what they produce.
So I think in the art room, I think you're looking at, like, the art is focused on concept and standard, right? So they're encouraged to experience what that discipline offers. The Maker Space is self-designed, but they're using the same process. So they're getting it both ways. In the classroom, we have the same thing happening, like if they're doing nonfiction study materials. This is across the district, just not like here. You know, they're, they're doing process at the same, but there's choice involved. So we're really giving them practice about owning their own learning, but yet maybe using a process that is transferable to different disciplines.
What, uh, what are some of the challenges that you found?
Um, in the Maker Space in general, uh, the idea that they. Well, incorporating it, I think we've managed a structure within our, um, schedule that allowed us to have a routine with it. So I think that that felt good for us. So we didn't have challenges per se with that. So, we didn't have challenges per se with that. But I think the students would like to be there longer and they would like to finish sometimes. And so, they can't always finish, they have to wait for the next time. And so, that's one thing. The other thing too is space. There's a lot of projects and where to store them. So, we're starting to feel like, oh goodness, you know. So, we're trying to think, where's all second grade going to go as we're waiting for, you know, their next time to visit? So, space has been an issue. But yeah, and then really, I have to say, the staff has been fabulous. I mean, they're just so creative, they think outside the box. So, they're always working to find something new to try. So, we're not short of ideas. It's just a matter of time, just being patient and implementing it in a slow way, not going so fast that, you know, it becomes too overwhelming, but just doing it at the pace that's comfortable. Good? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming. And please thank the students that came.
Yes, we will.
Glad we didn't get to separately thank them.
Right, and I have one teacher.
So, that concludes that part of the agenda. So, we'll go on to the public comment on the agenda. Do we have any? Any of us have public? So, I guess not. The consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda people would like to remove? Nope, hearing nothing. That is a, do we have to actually approve that now? It's just done. All right, reports and recognition. I'm not the board chair, so I don't have much of a report. I just wanted to thank all of our administrators for handling from what I've heard and can tell. Was it Wednesday, the 14th, our national school walk-in? As we treated it, it seemed to have gone really well. And from what I heard was meaningful and powerful for those students who wanted to partake. And there were students who didn't and that was, seemed to be okay as well. So, that was, I'm really glad. And we've heard that there were some schools that had challenges and some communities that are having issues with that, but everything went really well here. So, I thank all of the administration for that. And I think, let's see, was it Karen and Lori that went to Cave Day on the Hill? Sorry, I didn't get to do that and I'm looking forward to hearing about what you heard. That's all I have.
Okay, well, I just want to thank Emily and her staff for doing an outstanding job. I don't know how many people really looked at these beautiful containers with the lights when the lights were all up. It was very cool, it was very cool. And, you know, whatever Emily and her staff do is always just right to perfection. So, congratulations on a job well done. I want to thank Colin for again, another great video, beautiful. We're very fortunate to have him. Our videos are professional, they're professional videos. So, great job, it's wonderful to be here. And, you know, board members, you're always invited to visit schools. If you let us know, you know, the principals are always happy to let you see what's going on. So, you know, just the door's always open as long as we know you're coming, it's not a problem.
Just give us a heads up.
Yeah, give us a heads up, just show up. Yes, the Makerspace video will be on YouTube, right?
Yeah, okay.
With that said, is I want to congratulate Jack Roush and his family and Chris Dennis and the high school for a wonderful world. So, fair for him, I couldn't make it, but I heard it was fabulous. Is it on YouTube yet?
Yes.
It is, okay, good. So, I need to, if you weren't there, please check it out. It really is wonderful. So, I'm sorry I missed it, but things happen. Couple of other things before I get into the meat of my stuff. Our new class of 2017 report came out today, it's in the mail. It really is very well done. Karen, congratulations on an excellent, excellent job. There's some wonderful stories in here about alum and the teacher of the year and just really very, very impressive. We started doing this so that, it came out a little late this year. We got a little behind with the AgSTEM, but so that people in the communities can really see all the great things that the class of does every year. So, great job. This weekend is the performance of The Stranger, Agatha Christie, at the high school. So, if you have nothing going on, I think it's Friday, Saturday, is it Sunday also?
No.
Just two performances, right? Friday and Saturday. I wanted to share with the board just two articles that were in the paper. I don't know if you get the articles, but they were both interesting and I thought it would be interesting for you to have it just for your own. So, the first one is about the Waterbury Public Schools, who and the, their board chair spoke at Cave Day on the Hill, saying that they're looking for schools to partner with to take their children. So, that might be something that the board wants to look into in the future, where, you know, they're, that's, they're looking for that. So, that's the first one. And then the second article is, and this is really exciting, is about Womago in Region 10 and the high interest of agri-science students in our area. And I always like to remind, especially new board members, why we started the agri-science program. We started it at our school because Region 14 was turning away students every year who wanted to go to an agri-science program. You will see here that Region 10 is sending this year, next year, September, 27 students to Womago because these programs are flourishing and there's a lot of interest. So, I just think it's good for us to remember why we're doing the agri-science program. We're starting it and we're continuing it because there are students who have that passion. And if you have a passion for something in high school, you are entrenched, you are passionate, you are involved, and you are successful for the rest of your life. So, I think we have to remember that. So, I thought it was two really good articles that you could have and read at your leisure. We have a, it is Board Appreciation Month and you have little gifts from my office with Shapad Paperweight, so we thank you always for volunteering. Board members is a volunteering job and it's not always the most wonderful job, but we appreciate all that you do, many, many hours. We have a leave of absence. Michael Nolan is asking for a leave of absence. He's having a baby with his wife. Cave Day on the Hill, you missed a really good Cave Day on the Hill. So, anyway.
Snow days are...
I know. We went to the cave, the, you know, the auditorium where different speakers come and it was Andrew Fleischman and it was Gail Lavelle, Labiel. And then, of course, Patrice McCarthy and other people from Cave. And they were wonderful. I thanked Senator Fleischman for supporting us and he said he would love to come to the groundbreaking. So, I think we have to remember that, that was really cool.
That's very...
So, we stayed there for a while and then we were getting hungry. We said, let's go eat. No, first we marched over, let's go eat. No, the governor is having a press conference. So, we sat there, right there in front of the governor, Blumenthal, Senator Blumenthal, Commissioner Wenzel, people from CAPS and CAPE and CAS. And we were there for about a good 45-minute press conference, really about the situation of arming teachers. And the people who spoke were totally against arming teachers. They made the point very clearly that there is no educational organization that supports arming teachers and that it wasn't a good idea. We'll just leave it at that. But it was really, I mean, it was really something. And there were kids there from other schools and it was, it was very cool to be there. It was like a surprise thing that we did. So, we had a good time, we missed you, I'm sorry. And then, on the school calendar issue. Okay, so let me tell you where it is. We're going to need a motion. I don't exactly know what the motion's going to say, but I'm going to give you information. Do you have the calendars? I asked Sue, did you bring them?
Yes.
Okay. Basically, there are 188 days in the school calendar. The kids go 183, the staff goes 188. That's their contractual amount that they need to work. The state law is that kids need to go 180 days. We are currently, right now, have 10 snow days. Our last day of school right now is, well, I don't have this in front of me. It's in something like... It's June 22nd, it's a Friday. The kids and the teachers currently, as of right now, unless we make a motion and make changes tonight, are going to school on Thursday and Friday of spring break. I should take out my calendar, I have it here.
The 19th and 20th.
Okay, here we go. That's the 19th and 20th of April. If it snows this week, and it might, or even in the future, everybody will be going April 18th, 19th, and 20th. I spoke to our board chair, because I knew he wouldn't be here tonight. My recommendation is that we knock the students down to, right now, 181 days. After this week, maybe 180 days. So, I want a flexible motion if you agree, so that they are not going to school spring break. They're ending June 22nd. And the teachers, certified staff, teachers, administrators, will owe us two days, maybe three, to be made up their choice, the week of April 16th or June 25th, 26th, 27th. Under the tutelage of Teresa and the principals to plan curriculum writing, assessments, whatever it needs to be, there's a lot to be done. So, basically, what I'm, that's all I'm going to say and I'll answer your questions. Oh, let me say one more thing. If we go to four snow days, two more snow days, the kids have to come in on that Friday. Because they will now, they need that day. They have to come in on April 20th. If we, if, if we have three more snow days, the kids have to come in on April 19th.
But let's just say hypothetically, it's Wednesday, I'm sorry.
Yes, that there's three. If there's three days.
Well, not just three, like if we just have...
We have one more day.
One more day. Because it's not going to snow after that.
Then the kids do not have to come on spring break and they end on June 22nd and the teachers owe us three days. And they will make it up either the week of April 16th or the week of June 25th.
Welcome, Michael, I forgot to say.
Just to clarify, Pat, because there's a lot of dates moving around there. Right as of tonight, there is no plan then for them to come in during April break?
Yes, there is. As of right now, I sent out a letter to the parents, tentative letter, based on the board's input, that kids are coming to school on the 19th and 20th of April.
Which is that Thursday and Friday?
Right. You can, as a board, say we're knocking them down to 180 days, 181, possibly 180, and they don't have to come that week unless we have two more snow days.
I would love to propose that, that, I think that, you know, that's a wasted day. Educationally, I mean, people have, parents have plans.
Teachers have plans.
Teachers have plans.
Bus drivers have plans.
Yeah, I mean, it just, we'll have the building open and it would count officially, but it wouldn't really be an effective learning day.
Right.
So, I think that your idea of reducing temporarily this year our number of days is a good idea so that we could just make that a full week. And besides which, I think the kids deserve a full week of a break.
I agree.
Despite the fact that they're getting breaks now, people are thinking, oh, you know, it's really not a quality break, you know, when they're up, is it going to happen? And most of my students now are thinking, please, please, they're seconding your anti-snow wishes. So, yeah, I really think that that's a great idea to restore those two days and temporarily this year bring our max down. And I appreciate your thinking of the faculty and being flexible there with their professional days. I think most of them would really appreciate that as well.
So, I guess just two things. I also support that, that idea reluctantly because I know years ago they negotiated hard to get those teacher, those instructional days for our students. So, I think, have we approved next year's calendar already? We probably did.
Yes.
We might want to just take a look at it and just see what we can do to try to avoid, you know, building in a little more space, whether it's making a February break shorter, starting a day earlier, although we'd have to decide that really soon. But, because I don't want to just willy-nilly give instructional days away because they're very important and I, and I'm not saying that we're doing it willy-nilly, but I'm just, I think it's the right thing to do because I just don't think those days in April would be very useful, there wouldn't be very many people here. So, that's my comment there. The other question that came up, and this really, I guess, only affects the high school, maybe the middle school, so I don't know how it would affect the elementaries, but I had the request that if we were looking at the April break, that we look at the Monday and Tuesday instead because all of the sports teams have games on Monday and/or Tuesday. And so, those teachers and those students will be here anyway. So, you might have a better compliance on the Monday, Tuesday?
I don't, I would think they, somebody has games the 19th and the 20th too, if they have it.
And they all moved them.
Everybody moved them?
They don't right now.
Just to the... Okay. I don't have a problem with that. The only issue is, I already said to the parents that it's going to be the Thursday, Friday, Thursday, Friday, but you know.
I mean, hopefully, it won't come to that, but it just, I know that that's a pocket of people who have to be here anyway. So, that was that request. Michael?
I think just another idea, and maybe this is a conversation to have for next year, but we could theoretically go a little later. I think state statute lets us go as far as the 30th, correct?
We've had that once.
And there are, there are districts, my district included, that are going to the 27th now.
Right, they just keep adding to...
Which is not great, believe me, I'm not thrilled about that. But we do have a little bit of wiggle room on the end there if we needed that. Obviously, there are problems there because there are students that, and families that are ready to have vacation plans.
Goes away.
Camps that they're going to.
Yeah, they start camps, I know.
So, that's not ideal either, but...
Which is, I'm assuming, why we're considering giving up two instructional days because we really don't want to go into that last week. So, I guess for future planning, we should think about the fact that that last week of June's really, that nobody, I feel like we're as reluctant to go into that as we are into April. So, we should maybe try to build ourselves a little more wiggle room. Although you said they've got 10 snow days? That's pretty exceptional. Do we have a history of...
10 is a lot. Didn't we just do a survey on this for something? What was it for? Amount of snow days and early dismissals? We did it for something.
They were doing to see what people were doing about it.
Oh, because of the pool, yes, because of the pool. We did, we had a list. The average was like seven point something.
Okay, so this isn't above average? If that makes sense.
So, just one more point that I just wanted to make too. If, it sounds like we might be able to solve the problem and keep the full April break. But if we, I hate to even say it because it might make it happen, but if we did have to start going into April break and taking one of those days, I'd love for you to have a plan in mind for the faculty because that group would be impacted the most. And I'm thinking there may be a handful of faculty members who purchase tickets for...
We already had those lists, I have all of that.
Okay.
Yes, we already have all of that.
You've already decided that they...
How many personal days, how many sick days, all that stuff.
If there's a situation though where a faculty member did have purchased a while ago, I'm not talking about somebody who just this week purchased tickets, but someone who purchased them a while ago, I would love for you to be able to say to them, obviously, your first choice would be use a personal day, but if they didn't have personal days, to say to them, you could pay for a building sub to replace you for that day, to give them that discretion. Some districts, the superintendent will even say, don't worry about it, especially for somebody who's been here for a while. But I just feel sorry for, I really feel for a faculty member who maybe has tickets to California.
Well, we already told them that they would be able to use their personal time if they had personal days. I think it gets just a little sticky when you... I think it gets just a little sticky when you say you can use sick days, or "Don't worry about it," because then you're getting, you're like treating different people differently.
Right.
So if it gets to that, I would bring it, and we'd have a discussion before we made decisions.
And I do know, our district, one year, they had actually, we had so many that they said, "If you could pay for a sub, you could take that debt."
Okay.
And some contracts actually have language to that effect.
Right.
Okay, but, okay, but...
I just have a comment. I'm just wondering, I mean, I know you already sent the letter out, but I'm just wondering, for the future, why wouldn't we go into that next week, instead of taking it from spring break, where we could actually have instructional days?
At some point, before I was here, this was put into the calendar. Do you see right here, underneath April? If you read that, it says, "June 13th to 22nd, snow days will be added to the end of the year. Any additional days required will be taken from April's spring recess." So this decision was made before I arrived.
So is that a board decision that was discussed?
I think, because we went into that last week of June, and June 29th. Yeah, and it was, it messed up so many families' camps and leagues. So we must have made that decision.
For next year.
When you run into a lot of time off, and it's early in the year, remember the big ice storm over the last week?
Yeah, in October.
Well, when you're that early, then you start looking at the days that we had off prior to the break. And so we had people coming, or students coming in those days, and moved those later on into the year. Just so happens this year, all of these days started falling, where we ran out of the days later in the winter, which is causing the problem with the calendar.
Right.
But if it's early enough, you could start looking at the days that you have off built into the calendar ahead of time. It's just not the case now. They're gone.
Right.
The board does make the calendar, though, so you can, as long as you have 180 days for the students and 188 for the kids, you can do whatever you like. So it is, and you can certainly look at next year's and make changes.
I just...
You're raising your hand.
I know, I'm looking around.
I don't know.
So funny. I know, it's been so long. I never do this. All right, well, so I have a comment question, too, because I was sort of thinking about this. And this is not a reflection of, or judgment of you, because I know every district around us has called all that on snow days. But I'm just wondering if the philosophy, if the tolerance for snow, the, has changed?
Liability?
Well, I know there's liability. Hasn't there always been liability?
Well, I, this is what I'll tell you.
I don't know, because I just, there's like a trend, and I'm just wondering, is it changing?
I don't know. I can't, I could just tell you what is happening. This school year, you know, when the days that we had at the beginning of the year, no school, the major snow and ice and problems were right when the buses were leaving. And it was, it went to the two-hour delay. So that you need, you need to remember, our buses are out on the road at like 6:15.
5:30.
5:30, our buses are out, okay?
They're going out of district.
Because they go out of district. And so, and the last bus isn't done till maybe 9:10, by the time they leave and go back. Maybe even a little later, if they're coming from Bridgewater. So you need that almost four-hour window, where you can say, "We're good." The calls, for those of you out there who are watching, you know, we're on the phone with the meteorologist at 4:15 in the morning, and he's giving you the best-case scenario, and what's showing across the map, and we call the road crews, and we call the bus company, and you make the best decision you can make. And I will tell you this, I always err on the side of caution. I just do, because it's not just buses and adults. It's 16, 17, and 18-year-olds driving their own cars. So it's, so maybe because of that, we are a little more skirmish. Maybe somebody else, you know. I don't, it's very hard. It's very hard at 4:15 to figure out, you know, what you're gonna do.
I would be delirious.
You know, and it's...
Especially when we had the wind issue as well, because the road crew could only do one or two things.
And then you also have to think your staff is coming, and some of these, I have to say this also, the last two storms were very weird. I got like eight and a half inches in Bethel, and then like, you know, people in Salisbury got hardly nothing. And some people up here got, you know, 20-ish inches, and other people got two. So it's really been that crazy, and who doesn't have power? The last one, Roxbury, was out of power for a long time, and trees are down. So it's just a very difficult decision. It's just...
I think we're gonna have to just consider starting early, like if, if the trend continues, because we keep seeming to bump up against this, you know, reevaluate some of the time off, so that we're not always here at the end of June, you know.
So we do need a motion.
All right. So, do I have a motion to not... How am I gonna say this?
To reduce the student instructional days from 183 to 180 or 181, depending on the rest of the winter.
For the 2017, 2018 schedule.
Am I making that motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, the motion passes.
Okay, and then the only other, thank you very much. The only other thing that we included in the packet was, Chairman did ask for the rest of the Board of Education meetings for the end of the year. So I did, did get a copy of that.
I think it was in a separate email.
It was in a separate email. And if you didn't, we can send it again. Okay? And that's my report, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so back to the agenda. I think now we're picking up on F2. Does that seem correct? The financial status of the XM...
And right now, through the 19th, we spent 1 million, on the second page, 1 million, 1,1242 dollars, and there's a pending from the, in the minutes of the 12th of March, 15,000 dollars for the permits that Greg alluded to earlier. There are no bills at the moment, but there was approved through the Building Committee. They're just haven't come into the office, so that then leaves, I'm sorry, that leaves you an amount of 986,242, likely approved at this point, prior to us going to bid. So we still have work to do.
Off of the original approval, the whole thing's approved, right?
Well, yeah, but only up to, they're only working through design development at this point. So they haven't gotten to the next billings on anything beyond that.
Okay.
So I'm only reflecting that.
And up to this point, I remember at one point, we're still tracking close to what we had budgeted for all of this work?
Yeah. It's based on the contracts.
All right, great. Are there any questions?
I just wanna make just a little point. I know that there's been some questions out there about another vote or this kind of stuff. I just want people to understand that if the money that Bob's saying we're spending, we're getting 80% back in reimbursement in that. Most of it. If something were to happen, that cost would be totally to this district. So, you know, think...
Once you abandon a project.
Right, once you abandon a project, then the costs are yours. So I just want people to remember to tell that to people, who are very easy to say, "Oh, maybe, you know, we should rethink things," because none of us are even thinking about rethinking things. But it comes with a high cost to do nothing, or to stop the project. So just remember that. I think that's an important point for people.
I hadn't actually thought of that as an important point.
That's an important point.
80% on the line.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about the finances of the XM? All right. The next item, Greg is not here, it's the project plan status, which we were given... Oh, it was in the other item. It was in the folder. So in the packets that we got, there was a special folder that had all of the schedules and everything that Greg was gonna present, so we received that. Does anyone, I mean, do you know anything?
I have to think we're just moving along. I mean, we have a meeting on Wednesday at DAS. We have another meeting in April with DAS. He's, you know, there's been a lot of work going on the last week to prepare for Wednesday's meeting. A lot of signatures had to be attained, and all of that kind of thing. We're moving along. We're moving along. So, you know, we're on track. You know, hopefully, we'll get good news from DAS, and they'll give us permission to move forward, to go out to bid, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Just a question, going back to the numbers real quick. And it is, as many of you know, buzzing around the towns with the petition and so forth and so on. So just tell me the bottom line, and maybe you said it and I missed it, but how much have we spent so far that we would then be reimbursed 80% by the state?
If you were to, if you were to look at page two of this report, the 80% is related to the column labeled at the top as B, Aggreg Science. And that's 934, 775, 40. That's where we're at at the moment. But if the, if the project were to be ever canceled locally, you get zero.
So, and do we anticipate within, say, the next month, any more significant expenditures?
Oh, you'll continue to, within the next month? It really depends on where the schedule, what might happen with the bills coming in. I mean, we haven't seen an ONG bill in a while, but they're owed money. They just haven't built it, because they didn't wanna do it month for month. And we have a commissioning agent who's now working on the project, and they'll be start billing us. But they'll have their own schedule soon. It depends on the progress that they make before you get built. But that has to get approved by the Building Committee. Beyond that, once you get to the point where you could bid the demolition and hazardous material, you'll start to see that come through later in probably July.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions about the financial status or the project plan status of the XM? All right, move on to the last piece here, the budget discussion. In speaking with Anthony, our goal for tonight is to continue to ask questions, throw out possible concerns, suggestions, but that we would approve the final budget next Monday, which is the 26th, is that the 26th?
Yes.
Yeah. So, so having that in mind, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that have happened since our last budget conversation. I know Barbara Henry met with the Roxbury board members, as well as her Board of Finance, and she has some big concerns about this budget. She's very concerned about the increase, and would really like the board to do everything they can to decrease it. And she stated that in some very strong terms. And I wanted to just explain a little bit, Bob did some great background work for us. Looking at the percentage, the percentage that each town pays into the budget, because, so the overall increase that we're looking at is a 3.97%, which is $850,000 over last year. But because Roxbury's percentage of the student population has increased, they will be seeing a $648,000 increase. So they're seeing most of that increase to them personally. And if you look back over the, over history, you see that this happens sometimes. The percentage of the students changes. And two years ago, that happened in Washington, and Roxbury and Bridgewater saw decreases in what they would be paying in, but Washington saw an increase of $414,000. So it does, it goes back and forth. However, what's challenging for Roxbury is that this will be two years in a row now, that they're, they have increased. And Washington's increasing as well, but not as much, only 158,000. And Bridgewater's seeing a decrease. And Bridgewater has seen a decrease every year since about 2013. So this increase is hitting Roxbury especially hard. So I wanted to point that out. The challenge with that, I mean, there are a lot of challenges with that, but for every cut that we try to make, there's only a 36% savings on that to Roxbury. So for example, if we make, cut $100,000, that's 36,000 reduced for Roxbury, which is not, is not a lot, but 100,000, that's a teacher, that's two buses? What is a bus? Is a bus 40? No, it's more.
It's more.
What's a bus?
Bus right now is 56,693 dollars.
So, and so...
Plus fuel.
Plus, okay, so 56 plus is a bus. So, so it would take two buses, which would significantly increase ride times for Roxbury to see a savings of 36,000 dollars. It would take several teachers. So, so in order to move this needle, and in any way that that could be felt by Roxbury is gonna be very challenging. And I understand that, and that doesn't mean that we shouldn't go through and make sure that we've looked at everything that we can. But it's gonna be, it's gonna be a challenge. And on top of that, the state has cut the ECS...
To zero.
To zero, so, which is just a little, another little dig, because it wasn't a lot of money, but it was, it was, it was something. Yep, so that's, so that's sort of the challenge, one of the challenges. So in Barbara's email to me, and then maybe the two of you that were there can share some more, she asked us to look at busing and cutting buses, and saying, you know, "Can't we just have people dropping off to drop points?" We would need to know how many buses we have in each town, to even know if that's feasible. So that's, we can maybe talk about that. But that was one thing she wanted us to look at. She wanted us to look at staffing, teachers and administrators. And I think there was a...
Clerical staffing, I believe.
Clerical, yeah, okay, clerical staff. So quite a few areas that she would like us to review. I mean, I guess, if we find a little bit in each section, it all, it all adds up. But, and I know, this was the last thing that I'll throw out, and then we'll see if we have other comments or questions. But I know in years past, when we knew we had a challenging budget, we've asked for, we sort of brainstormed a list of the next places we would look, with the help, with the help of the superintendent, you know, where could we look for savings, and then, and then have a cost associated with that. So maybe that's something that we could sort of think about tonight. And Bob would be able to come to the meeting next week with the costs of, you know, whether it's a bus, or it's a two paras somewhere in the dish, or whatever, whatever it is that we, that we think about. So I think that's all I had. The only, the only other suggestion I was going to make is if you take, does everyone have their budget out?
Yep.
Well, no, one of the questions from last time, just if we would,
Yeah.
was to re-scour the remaining items in the 1%, or in the capital...
Yeah, that was what I was gonna say.
To see what could be moved over to the 1%. But again, that would take a motion of the board. So with that in mind, what I ended up doing, and you can pass this around, was to go back into that again, and we looked at this to ensure what we have. But there were about $56,000 that could be moved over to the 1% based on a motion of the board. And I detailed the items that are possible to move over. And I detailed the items that are possible to move over. It would still leave those things that aren't capital in nature of $21,850, uh, left in there. So, if you wanted to do something to move something, you could potentially move this 56.7 into the 1% fund.
That was what I was going to mention. If you want to, page nine is where you'll find.
Yeah, it'll, it'll tie up to that. It's, this schedule ties to the, at the bottom line, the 78,550. So, the two pieces that remain, plus the potential that you can move, the 56.7, ties to the bottom line on the page nine.
All right. So, um.
The other things are.
We could move, actually, I think if, if somebody would be interested in doing that, we could move for that to be removed tonight so that.
You could make up, you need to make a motion to.
And then, um, when we come back for the budget next Monday, then Bob, then we would have, we, we can see where we stand, so that, that could happen.
I'll make a motion to, uh.
Those are easy motions.
$56,700, um, on the 2018, 2019 budget proposal for Booth Free School and Washington Primary School to the 1% fund.
Second, second. All right. So, are there any other questions or discussion about that?
Let's go, let's go over to the 1% fund, refresh my memory.
That's the capital non-recurring fund that we fund at the end of each budget year. And, um.
It has enough funds to, to handle this.
Yeah, I, um, I can get the exact number for you.
It's not necessary.
But there's plenty, you don't have, except for, there's plenty of number in there.
Yeah, no, I think it's closer to eight. Well, if, once this year's, once this year's goes in, so.
To use for repairs, you mean?
Yep.
Capital repair, capital.
So, you can't use it for painting.
Can't use it for, well, normal wear and tear maintenance kind of things. That's why the bottom piece are things that would have normally been wear and tear kind of issues versus the ones above it are actually capital, because replacing a ceiling, replacing a lighting, uh, partitions, uh, those, the well pump, those are all capital in nature and can be funded through that.
So, this is a fund I think we put in many, many years, because the selectmen were complaining about money wasn't putting in to a place to repair schools, correct?
It's allowed by state law. It's a law, it's allowed to regional school districts by state statute.
By state law.
And you can take your undesigned, or your unexpendited appropriation of the 1% of your budget.
Right.
And put it in there for capitalizing, so that's what you're doing.
Okay.
And then spend it on that, those kind of things.
So, um, the balance is 744,247 as of June 2017. So, with a possible, with another transfer of 213,000.
So, these are things that, these are projects the schools need.
Yep.
Why wouldn't we put it in the operating budget?
You did.
We did. And this is money left over that we're using to.
What you're doing is you're identifying all these projects for the operating budget in the year you're coming up with.
Right.
The funding is still available.
Okay.
But it takes a motion of the board to actually make, to recognize those and, and it can only be spent for those items.
Taking it out of the operating.
Right. To reduce the operating budget, but you first have to identify it.
Okay. Good, are there any other?
There's many more things that need to be done, but they're scheduled out further in time.
Yeah, we discussed it.
Questions?
Yes, please. This is actually just a comment, um, but when we're, I think it's important when we're, we're speaking with the public, whether it's a resident taxpayer after the, of first selectman, to remind people that over the last four years, as far as I can remember, the budget increases that we've been coming to them with have been extremely low, like 0%. And I think, you know, people's memory is very, very short. You know, they're, they're just focused on the moment right now. And they're, they're often not thinking about that. But I think it's, it behooves us to remind people that, you know, when times were tough financially, we were extremely, extremely conservative with our budgets. And, um, you know, right now, um, apparently the economy is, is getting better. And I know that it may be unfortunate for a given town like Roxbury because of the shift in population. Um, but those students are getting services. You know, that's, that's how we set up the regional agreement and, um, so it's just, it's just unfortunate, but.
And it's on page 16, S16 in your budget. It shows you the last years of the budget.
The other thing to consider at the facilities committee meeting tonight. Alan O'Leary gave us lists of things immediate and five to 10 years down the road and then further on down the road. It's about $25 million worth of repairs and maintenance that we have to do on these buildings. So, the budget, I don't see getting better at any point in the near future. So, I mean, if you want to maintain all of these facilities, the taxes are going to go up.
Um, I didn't meet with Barbara and, um, and Greg, but I met with her separately. And, and I'm really worried that if we don't cut, the budget's not going to pass in Roxbury. So, I think we really do, whether we do it tonight or next week, we really do need to get creative and think about how we could cut. I would prefer not to te, cut from the staff, um, programs for the kids, um, educators and administrators. But I think one place where we could really look, I think, is the busing. And I know we all think, no, we can't look there, but we can't keep three schools and have the busing. And especially when they're driving around half empty, parents drive their kids to school. I just think that that's one area that's not going to affect education. May, it may be inconvenient for some parents, but I think that's one place that we really do need to look.
We tried to address that with Barbara earlier, because we looked at this thing and, and there's a, a response back to Barbara that went back to her, like, two months ago relative to this.
Can we hold that question though for just a second?
Sure.
Because I want to talk about that too, because we do have a motion on the floor.
I'm sorry, you're right.
That was seconded about the capital improvement.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, so let's just hold that thought, because I want to talk about busing as well. Do we have any other questions about the motion on the floor to move the 56,700 out of the operating and into the capital reserve fund? No other questions? All right, all in favor? Aye. Those against? Those abstaining?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bob, for bringing that list, that was really helpful. I had a bunch of scribbles on my paper. All right, back to busing.
Just, I mean, busing, I just want to clarify a couple of things with this busing issue. It's two problems. One is distance, and we can't shrink that, I don't know how. And the other is the clock, okay? And in order to do anything, we've manip, I'm not going to call manipulating. We constantly review the buses that we need and see where we can make some savings. Since 2009, 10-year, we've already taken five buses out of this. It parallels the reduction in students, but now we're at the point where the time and also the distance is becoming a problem. We can't move one without the other. As an example, it's very simple. If all I wanted to do is take students and put them in seats, I could do all of Bridgewater with one bus. Problem is you run it for two hours.
Well, but if you had.
The same thing ends up happening. Now you get into where are we going? And we're doing a lot of places that are dirt roads. We're doing places that aren't, that, we could have parents come further out. When we start looking at that and we've looked at it carefully, it takes a concerted effort to stand behind the decision you're going to make by the board and the town. We've gone through this before where we were going to reduce a bus and it lasted a week. That's the problem, because you, you've seen in the paper this weekend, the bears are out. You'll, as soon as you take a bus from one place and walk, there's where you start to run into problems. I mean, we're not going places that we don't have to go. We looked at it again, it's possible to reduce two buses from this, but you have to stand behind your decision. I'll have the detail of exactly where it's going to take place. Much beyond that, we're in a lot of trouble with it. Barbara's suggestion, and when she talked about this issue of the seats and parents, that traditionally happens in a situation where, and it happens at the high school level, where you have a, a huge population and they don't necessarily provide seats for all of the kids because they know there's an attrition factor, and so they, they adjust it accordingly. Here, it's very difficult to do because of the distance that you have to travel with the clock. It's a different set of circumstances. And I know where the report that she looked at, very familiar with it, it generally happens where you have a high density population. And we don't have that.
Thank you, Bob. I just want to ask, because I'm not sure about what the rules are, but, I mean, I know at Sherman, we have a bus that goes to the school. And everybody who lives in Sherman drives to the Sherman School and then takes the bus from Sherman to, to Shippensburg.
They're leaving auto, right.
So, I'm wondering why we could look at the schedule of the buses that don't have a lot of students and then have a designated place for a bus to come? Because to be honest with you, because we live where we live and we have dirt roads and we, and to be honest with you, a lot of kids who still live on dirt roads still have to walk a significant way to meet the bus. So, I, I don't know why that could be explored, where that maybe we have a bus meet at Roxbury Market or have a bus meet at one designated area where everybody can then drive their kids to and then they can still take the bus to Shippensburg or to Booth or to wherever. And I think that that's something that we should explore.
It's, it's somewhat doable, but you can't use Roxbury Market because it's a.
I'm using that as a height like that, I mean, but there's a lot of different choices.
It could be done that way.
Town Hall or, or however it may be.
Exactly, you can do things like that if you're willing to make.
I think that that's something we should explore.
But you have to do it.
Lisa, you go and then I'll get this topic.
Because you have distances involved on your policy.
I think, I think what you're saying, Jen, is, is great. And I think just because it's been done like that all of these years, and I understand the problems, but I think we're in different times.
Absolutely.
And I think we need to get creative. And it doesn't have to be the Roxbury Market, because that's a private place. It could be the Town Hall. But I think if, if every town wants a school, we need to be creative to do that. And I think, looking at the budget, because I think you all did a great job with the budget and keeping it pretty trim, that's like the one place, I think, where we can look at it. And I don't know, I just think, like, Jen just threw that out there. I think if we all get together and just think outside of the box and just know that it's, it's not going to be the same.
It's much easier to run it that way.
Um, I just was going to throw in, because I, I agree. And I think for next week, I don't know that we can solve either, well, we can approach it one, two ways.
I actually think you could really solve, I think there could be a lot of, I mean, that could be a really, solve a lot of the issues, I think, by having one or two locations where one or two buses go to. I think that could be a significant.
A lot easier.
It would, and it would be a significant savings in all three of the towns, quite frankly.
Once you make that decision.
For each of the towns.
Saying, once you make that decision, that's.
Right.
All right, well, we have to make some pretty major decisions.
What I, what I was going to say is that we could either, as a board, say, please cut two buses, you figure it out, or ask the administration, come back next week and say, hey, we'd like to kind of see how many buses are in each town and what this might look like. Because, and then I just want to, for a little historical reference, we used to have a transportation committee, which Alan and I served on, because we used to have so many angry parents, back when the Judd Bridge.
That's the way they disappeared real quick.
Oh, boy, right. And we were going to cut a bus because we were going to save money. And I, if you want to watch the library film.
I'm sure.
But here's, but here's the thing. We are, we are at a place with this budget where that needs to happen.
Yep.
And they either, the parents either need to come and say, no, we will support this budget.
Right.
Put the bus back, or at least they knew in advance. Because, so we need to have those conversations out in the open. Because if we are going to have these three schools.
Right.
Yeah, and it's, it's a challenge. Because I, I just want to say, because, sorry, John, you go first.
I know, go ahead, John.
Go ahead, John, because you've had your hand up for a while and then John, come back in.
Did the Roxbury members and the, and the selectmen give any idea as to what would be palatable as far as the cut?
She didn't, she didn't come up with a number for me. I think, I think she would, I mean, I can find out what that golden number would be, but I think if we could cut.
That would help.
It would help, but, um, I know exactly, instead of just keep cutting and not knowing what that number is.
50,000 one bus or whatever, that may not be enough.
Well, I could, I could come back and, and, you know, with next week.
It's not even $20,000 to them.
But I, I mean, you put the two together, or if it's two buses and the 50,000 hour. No, two buses and the 50, we just did, we're at like 150.
150 there.
Back to person.
Back to the one person or one town that has the budget.
So, so that's.
It only uses 36% of it.
So, this is where in years past.
You see what I'm saying?
I do, I do.
In years past, we had a list.
It's still something we need to explore regardless.
Right, absolutely. But I think, in work, I mean, we might not be able to cut enough for Barbara to be happy. But I think if we had a list of the things, and, and we're just going to hash, to hash it out Monday. But in order to see the numbers I think she's looking for, we would have to go deeper. And, and she and the parents need to know that. Like, if the budget doesn't pass, the next thing that happens is most likely it's classroom teacher. And this is where it would be. And then the next thing that would happen was, would be this, and this is where it would be. And so, they can see how it impacts program.
Right.
That, and that is a decision that will be made in the.
And it may not even be the parents that are upset about the budget. It may be people who aren't necessarily affected, the people who don't have kids in the system.
Right.
So, but we have to start somewhere, right? So.
Right, Michael?
I think the other, the other point that we need to remind people that is that for some of these towns, if we designated drop-off spots at the elementary schools, for example, we're covering a large chunk of the town.
Exactly.
We could be eliminating a significant number of, of buses. So, I, I think that, that's important. I mean, like, for example, where I live, I'm very close to, you know, the Burnham School. I mean, could we have driven my children to this school? Of course, we could have. I mean, it was more about the social experience for the kids. But when we're in these kinds of situations, that's, that's an easy call to make. And like Lisa was saying, I'd much rather make that cut than cutting programs, cutting staff.
Okay, I do think, you know what would be helpful, Bob? I mean, or depending on how you guys want to handle this, whether you guys make the decision. There are rules though, like, we can't make Burnham School the drop-off for the Burnhams' bus run, I don't think. Unless it's like within a mile and a half or two miles, because we are obligated to provide public transportation.
Drive the distances.
Aren't there state laws though?
It's not a state law, it's a recommendation.
Oh, no, but, no, okay. But there's a state law that we provide public transportation.
Your policy follows the recommendation of the state.
And the state requirement is what? Because we can change policy, but what is the state?
Two and a half miles, I believe it is for high school. I mean, it varies on the age group. Keep in mind, once you do that, you have to make sure that parents, somebody's there getting these kids. You're dropping them off.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
It does create problems.
We need to, we need to know.
I mean, there are, there's unintended consequences.
Well, if we, if we can use the schools, we have before care and after care at two of our elementary schools now.
Right, but then you've got high school kids that aren't of elementary age as well that you're driving. You see, there's unintended consequences when you start to do things like that. You have late buses, for example, that are running as well.
No.
That's always a challenge to make sure, but they're older kids. When you get down to, they're this big and you've got designated stops. I mean, sometimes we have trouble just getting them to their house. Not often, but it does happen.
Jen, I just also think too that by having designated, um, stops for buses, it's, it's, it's obviously, it's convenient to have your child being picked up at your, right at your house and driven. But the reality is, is that if, if I were, if I was told that I had to drive my child to a designation, I, I, it might actually just be easier for me to take my child to school. So, you would then opt out altogether. So, I think that, you know, I, I actually live very close to, shaking his head, I'm close. I live close to Washington Primary, but I would just then have opted to just drive my children to school if I had that choice, and also the same for Shippensburg, so I think...
Now, on the return.
Well...
I'm just...
I, I understand what you're saying, but honestly...
It just unintended consequences.
Whether someone's, I'm just saying that if you have to decide whether you're home, you have to find someone that, whether it's you or somebody else is going to be home for your child, or you still have to figure it out. I'm not saying it's inconvenient. It's still, it's still a struggle around this community anyway. That's why we have the after-school care programs, because it is a struggle. So they still have to maneuver and shift and figure it out, so it's the same thing. And I just think that it's something that we should be exploring in all three towns. I think it's something that would, because I just don't think, aside from it being expensive, I just don't think it's environmentally responsible to have a bus with three kids in it. I, I just, for me, don't think it is, so I think it's something we should be exploring in all of them, so, um, yes.
The budget needs to be raised, not lowered. The budget doesn't even cover so much work that needs to be done in these school systems. They wanted three schools, you have to maintain the three schools, and when you see the size of fifteen to twenty million dollars in work that needs to be done, don't talk to me about buses. That's the least thing you have to talk about. Barbara Henry wanted what she's got, and she has to pay for it, and so does Bridgewater. This is what the people voted for. This is what they should expect. We're so far behind in fixing the buildings, the cost is, by cutting the budget on these minuscule things, your repairs are just going to keep climbing and climbing. You're going to have to bond all the repairs in all your buildings. That's what you're going to have to do to even catch up to fix. I mean, for Barbara Henry to complain about the budget, to me, is ludicrous. You're going to hear this from every selectman from here on, and even with AgSTEM, you're going to hear this for the next twenty years. So we can't cater to these insignificant concepts of how to save thirty, forty, fifty. You're running a twenty-two million dollar budget. You can't mess around with fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand. You have to do what's necessary to run the system and keep it running so that everything's repaired and into the twenty-first century. So I, I've known Barbara Henry, I've been on the board with her, so I understand she's a selectman. There's complaints coming in from people, it's political, but I don't think you can just focus on the political side. We have to realize, this is a, this is a small system with, with a big budget, so that every time you leave something out, something happens somewhere. I mean, you can try to say, I mean, a twenty-two million dollar budget, what are you talking about? Twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand, I mean, you're talking about Dina.
I know, it's a drop in the bucket.
And you want to talk about a million, that's a two million, then, then we can talk. But, but what we're talking about isn't going to solve anything.
It's the shift in that population.
I agree.
She's got a bump. Look, you know why Larry got a bump. We didn't plan that bump. We didn't raise her portion of the budget by, by doing something budgetarily. It was, it happened, and it happens to all the towns. So, I mean, there's political ramifications in the budget for select.
Well, could I just address a few things that Pete had mentioned? I, I think in terms of our facilities, the, the buildings that we have, the elementary schools specifically, since I know that you mentioned that, are in better shape than they probably have been in the last ten years, right now, since I certainly have been on the board. So we're, we're definitely moving in the right direction. I don't think they're falling apart. I think we're doing our due diligence as a board. I think your second point about that we shouldn't have to worry about the politics, unfortunately, you know, we live in the real world where we do need to worry about the politics, and I don't blame Barbara Henry for bringing her concerns. She should be concerned. She's the first selectman of her town. I don't blame her at all for having concerns about the budget, nor do I blame her for coming back to us and saying, I think you need to, to make some cuts. As long as we feel that they're not draconian, as long as we feel that we're not hurting the educational system, then I, I think that's a reasonable request for any selectman to make, for us to, to look at it. And to be creative, yeah, I think sometimes that, that requires a certain level of discomfort if it hasn't been done before, but I think we've got to go there, and I think, I'd like, I'd like to think that if we do this in, with some level of honesty and some level of effort, that that would be appreciated, from whether it's Barbara Henry on down to the regular taxpayer, that they would appreciate, maybe we didn't wipe out their six hundred thousand dollar increase. I don't think there's any way, you're right, that we can do that. But would they appreciate even a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand dollar decrease? I think they would. I mean, who's going to say no to effort that we've made?
Well, I agree. I feel that we need to look everywhere, and I find it so ironic that you'd say that, Pete, because you find school budgets. I know, I know, because you know, I'm always ready to increase the budget.
Well, we don't increase it arbitrarily, we increase it respectively.
Okay.
Right?
I do want to just make one point for everybody. Last year, the budget was point one-two increase, and there was only one town out of the three that passed the budget, and that was Roxbury. Okay, so two other towns who had a point one-two increase, which is almost zero, didn't pass the budget.
And every year we've been returning money to all of these towns.
So I think one of the things that the board always has to remember is not only, this is the budget, but how do we pass the budget? Because if you don't pass the budget, it doesn't matter what's on the paper and what you're cutting, what you have, what you don't have.
Well, that's why I feel that the conversation about what we're considering cutting and what would happen if the budget doesn't pass, and we do have to go back and cut those things, would hopefully motivate some of the people to come out and vote and say, you know what? That's not okay. Maybe we can cut a bus, but I'm not okay with a teacher, or, or wherever. You know, everyone has their own personal line of where they're going to draw that. I just wanted to add, when I was trying to dig into the, to looking at the struggles for Roxbury and the increase that they had, I was looking at the mill rates and the net grand lists for the towns to just kind of see what was going on, and for 2016, Roxbury had the lowest mill rate. So, but, and, but we're all close to each other. Thirteen point seven was Roxbury, Washington fourteen point two five, and Bridgewater sixteen point four five. So, and I know the town budgets go into that and there are other factors, but the largest piece of that budget is the education budget. And, you know, they're getting a jump this year, and that's unfortunate, but we're all paying in at a rate proportionate to what we own that's very similar. So I, I, it's, I think what we should do is do the best we can to, to bring the overall number down responsibly without hurting program and try to sell. Julie?
Just a comment, I think what we're going to hear, because our student numbers went down again and our budget is going up, what everyone is going to glom onto is not about what happened last year, the year before, it's that we have less kids and we're asking for more money. And everybody looks at that number, we're probably the highest in the state, that's what everybody says. And I don't know, what is the number now, Bob? What's, for next year, what's going to be if this budget went through?
Thirty thousand dollars.
Right, so...
We're not number one anymore, though.
Well, that's good. That's, that's what everyone, that's the way we've taught people to think about it, and so that's what they're going to think about it, and that's hard to fight. And they're going to be looking for us to spend less, not more.
And we got hit, unfortunately, with a bill that we hadn't seen in fourteen years. And it's the medical, and it's strictly driven out of huge claims, and even when we went to market on it, the response back from five companies, only two gave us numbers, and their actuaries looked at the same thing as what Anthem did, and we've taken the Anthem number down from where we started, but it's not dropping to where it is because the claims are there. It's like you do in your house. If you, if you have claims on your house, the rate goes up. Then there's where we are. If you have nothing, you can argue not to pay more, and we've done that for fourteen years.
Lisa had her hand up, and then Michael, and then Pete.
I don't know if this is the time to bring it up, but I, I know what you're saying, Julie, is right, and I think where people might be going is raising the C-word again, which is with the elementary schools. And, and I say that because I've, I've seen it out there on social media that we can't afford with these few students to keep up three elementary schools. So just, you know, I'm not, that's not something we need to talk about for this year, but that may be in our future. And that may be something that we need to investigate again, so.
Yeah, Michael?
Again, another idea, maybe, it probably will be very unpopular, usually is in any town, but pay-to-play. How much money in the budget would we save if we did have a pay-to-play?
Oh, my God, we're like scrounging for players, the sixty-point team.
Maybe we have to pay them to play.
Yeah, we need to pay them to play. We need to have an incentive for that.
You'll be able to take that money and try to find people.
Michael, Lily, I think all that would do is make sure that we have no teams.
That's true.
I mean, some places have a fee for being in a play.
We could save money, because then we wouldn't need any equipment.
Wow, well, that's a different high school. John?
Now that we're putting our cards on the table, I'm going to ditto what Julie said. Even the people in Washington, we're not going to take that big of a hit. We're not going to support three point nine seven. That's the word. We won't pass it.
And also, by the way, when the petition goes down, which I believe towns are not going to entertain what the petitioners wanted, because they've gotten the legal opinion in both towns, that's just going to get people mad, and that's going on in two towns, Washington and Bridgewater, and it's going to be revenge when they go to run the budget.
So just to sum up, Bridgewater and Washington have big, you know, groups of people mad at us, and Roxbury is really mad because they are getting the worst. So we're looking, yeah, it's a challenge. I guess to bring up, to go kind of back to what Lisa was saying, though, with consolidating, which I don't think the board has the stomach to, to even look at right now, is that we need to remind all the people who voted to keep the three schools that they need to pay for them because they're expensive. I mean, that was, that was a choice that came with a dollar amount. You know, it, it, it's kind of pointless to keep them open if we can't staff them, if we can't put, buy the stuff for the makerspace, or we can't get the kids to them.
Or maintain the staff to make it happy for everybody to pass the budget. I mean, there's the word "we" too many variables.
So, so anyway, so we just need to remind the people of the choice they made not very long ago, that, that there was a dollar amount assigned to that, and we're not making it punitive, it just is.
But we also need to remind them that there was a huge dollar amount to build a brand-new consolidated school when we had very few kids, so it goes both ways.
No, 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 no. I was just going to say one thing. You would have saved a million dollars a year to build that school. Okay, so let's not, let's just, we put the facts on the table.
Maybe even more now that the legislature is when I know.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
But, but the operating, that's a different, that's a different discussion. That it is definitely cheaper to operate one school. How much cheaper versus the building, that's a different discussion, but the voters wanted the three schools.
Right.
And so we're, we're running them as responsibly as we can, and, and I agree. We need to look at cutting a little bit more, because three point nine seven is, is a lot. But I feel like it's a crapshoot, because whether you increase the budget almost four percent or you keep it at zero, someone's not happy.
Oh, no.
So whatever their own, the own, that old town's agenda is, makes it really hard to make everyone happy.
Well, and it's, in my mind, it's where the parents need to be involved, too.
Yep, I agree.
Remember also, though, that only ten percent of the parents use our school. Ninety percent of the people in these three towns do not have kids in the school. So when you have ten percent, it's still, if you don't get people to buy in, it's, the budget's not going to pass. So it's just, you know, these are just facts that have come up throughout the years that, you know, we need to look at.
I mean, you've got this pressure from the state problem as well, and that's where the revenue's not coming in to Barbara or Washington or Bridgewater as well. I mean, it's not something we have a lot of control over. They passed the budget and two days, or two weeks later, they changed it. You know, this is what's been going on as well, and it's very hurtful.
So we've identified that we have a challenge in front of us.
Yeah, we're putting you in charge of that.
And we need to fix it by Monday, because we're going to, we're going to prove something. We have to prove something Monday. If we don't, we're going to have to have special meetings, because we have to have a number.
Budget meeting Monday?
Yeah.
Is that pure budget?
No, it's, and the superintendent, um, search as well. So, but those are, those are the only two things on the agenda. So I've, we've heard a lot of support for looking into the busing, so whatever you can come with on Monday that would be helpful to that conversation would be good. Are there any other things that we would like the administration to, to, to help us with? I mean, guiding us in where you would look next for a little bit more? I, I mean, I, I don't know, there, there are only really two other places we can look. We can look at the program changes, or we can look...
There's not a lot in there.
No, there's not, there's not a lot in there, or we can look at staffing. I don't want to do that. And I don't, I know we don't want to do it. No, 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 I'm saying we would ask them to come back next week with numbers, or suggestions. You know, where would the first place?
I'll give you some, I'll bring some numbers of staffing possibilities. One that I brought up in September, if you can recall.
Is that a teacher?
No. Okay, we had a meeting about it. So that's, you know, those are things, hard decisions have to be made. I'll put it out there and people decide.
It just is another number that's just confusing everybody, but we returned over the last ten years, a million five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to the three towns that were returned in funding balance
Unspent.
From revenue and unexpendited appropriation, but, I mean, we did return a million five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars over that period of time, and I have the splits by the towns, but, I mean, you're looking at Bridgewater with about three hundred and fifty thousand, Roxbury was about four hundred and eighty thousand, and Washington was about six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that was actually returned over that period. Granted, it took ten years to get it to them, but, I mean, when you talk about taking a budget, working it responsibly, and still ending up returning from the revenue side and whatever we had in the unexpendited and building that one percent fund that we did, and we handled a lot of problems that would have hit the budget, that budget would have been much higher by now.
Well, and it shows that we, that we responsibly managed the budget.
But there's only so many dollars you can, you know. If I had to hold a million five, it'd solve the problem all at once, because you can't hold the balance in a regional or in an educational budget.
Michael?
Bob, is the, for the tuition-in monies, which I know go back right to the towns, do you have a total in the budget somewhere where people could see that, where we can communicate that to?
Absolutely, it's in the page on the revenue.
Page eleven?
Yep, and it's in there, and I was asked a question tonight. And with budgeting, I budgeted conservatively, because I'm not going to overpromise revenue, because our budget is based on the public supporting the gross budget. So on the revenue side, that's the net that goes back to the towns. That's where if we get more revenue in, it goes to them anyway. So it's on page ten, and there's actually a little block in the bottom of it. I added it.
Thank you.
There's a lot of information in that document.
Page eleven.
Page eleven?
I'm sorry, eleven.
Sorry. Pete?
I think somebody better explain to the towns what they're in for with AgSTEM. Somebody needs to sit down with the selectmen and explain what's going to occur with all of these documents we have in addition to what AgSTEM is going to cost them. That's not a free role. So if they're not going to pass, and I understand how tax, I'm listening, and I've done it before, I've been through that, they're not going to pass four percent, what happens when you add another program that encompasses all this space? When you're so far behind in your facilities commitment now, and you add another thirty thousand square feet, your budget's not going backwards. It's going to have to be funded. So I don't think the board understands the problem it faces, nor does the taxpayers. I know the superintendent thinks she does.
Well, I, I would like to just share a couple of things. And regardless where this moves, we have to understand the facts. The agri-science program is going to cost some money upfront, but it is doing a lot of work in this high school that you would have to pay for if you didn't have the AgSTEM, starting with the science labs. Okay, that would be a hundred percent, maybe you get twenty-five percent back reimbursement from the state. You'd have to pay for that. It's doing work in the heating, it's doing work in the air conditioning, it's doing work in the buildings, it's doing work with the lighting, it's putting in windows. All of these expenses that you would have to pay for. You're getting them at... You're getting them at eighty percent free, you're paying twenty percent, so that's the first thing. The next thing is, you are getting in students who are coming with ten thousand dollars ahead.
Ninety-eight-hundred.
Doesn't matter, I'm rounding to ten thousand, okay? That is never gonna happen. Your problem is not the middle high school, that's not where the expenses are. The AgSTEM is gonna save you. Your expenses come in the elementary schools, that's where they come in, okay? So, try to at least, we're moving forward with this, the board approved this, support the AgSTEM, because that is gonna save Region Twelve. It's gonna bring kids in, it's gonna attract people to the area, and it's your only hope at this point to move forward. I can't say that for the elementary schools, because they all are older buildings that need work. Yes, they're in good shape, but every week, a pipe is breaking, a this is breaking, the air conditioning is down, we have a leak here, we have a this, we have, that's where we're being nickelled and dined, okay? And that's where I have no answer for you, but the AgSTEM is the answer for Chapag. And you, it is.
It's not.
All right, come on.
It's really good.
That's all I wanna say.
I'll have that conversation.
All right. Does anyone else have something that they would like numbers brought for our budget discussion on Monday? Because we need to finish our budget discussion Monday. Or, well, we can always have a special meeting, but our goal is to finish, yes?
I would, and this is, again, taking the pulse of the taxpayers.
Okay.
I think the, uh, mine item for the superintendent's salary is way overboard.
That's right, you mentioned that last time. That would be another case.
Um, the other, the other word on the street is, we're very top-heavy with administration. I realize that somebody's job would have to get cut, but you look historically in this district, there was one principal for the three elementary schools. You have a far greater population than what is currently served.
When was that?
Uh, my sons were in so-
I remember that.
Eighties, late eighties, early nineties.
There was one-
Hoffman, one principal for all three elementary schools. He traveled between all three schools.
Wow, okay.
And that was with a great, again, with a far greater population than we have now.
I was on the board at that time. It didn't work. He couldn't handle, he came to the board, he could not handle the three schools.
He did it for about ten years, though.
He said, he told us, he came to us, he did that to accommodate the board and the fact that the board didn't wanna spend the money, the public was making a complaint about it, but he came to us and asked us to relieve him of the three schools. That's when we put in an additional principal. That was his request, it wasn't just the board. He came to us.
Yeah, well-
I mean, you could do, you can put someone in charge of five buildings. I mean, you could do that if you wish.
They're, they're just gonna be in each building twenty percent of their time, and, plus a lot of driving, so that's-
How about the hundred-and-twenty-six thousand for the Ag Director, when it's only gonna be really a part-time job for the first, for this coming school year? Is that necessary to have a full-time director in immediately?
Um, we can talk about, I think we need to hire somebody full-time, because we need to find-
To do what?
Well, to find a quality person, you're gonna need to offer a full-time job, but they're gonna be working on curriculum, the sched- helping with the schedule change, promotion, all of the brochures, materials, application, everything, because they're gonna be sending, looking for the students by mid-year, so they have to develop all of that, because the applications go out December, January? December.
Yeah, but-
So, so they've got September.
The director was also gonna teach a few courses, too.